All right, I'm going to call the order, the special meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for February 23rd, 2021. Could I get the roll call, please?
Ms. Quidno?
We're not hearing it out here, guys.
Mr. Foster?
We're not, we're not hearing it out here.
Sorry, could you hear me?
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
Mr. Foster?
Yeah.
I can come into the council chambers.
Yeah, why don't you do that, Betsy?
Okay.
He just made turn on the volume up, I think. I can hear, it's fine here. There's nothing trying out.
She's coming into the council chambers.
You can hear me, Steve.
You can hear me, though, right?
Now, you're supposed to make everything easier, right?
Right. Mr. Foster?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here. For those who can rise, please, rise, we'll say the first. Bring us item four, correction and or approval of the city council minutes of February 16th, 2021. Do I have a motion of adoption? So.
My second.
And thank you, Lieutenant Betsy.
Yes.
Okay. Please call the roll call vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno? Aye. Motion passed 4-0.
Thank you. Move this into council business. Item A, the presentation in memoriam to council vice president Diane Hoss-Fritsch. And I'm not seeing our state representative, who is supposed to be here for this. It's okay if we move past this and get to her and get to that one, but she shows up. Okay, so we'll move down to C. Resolution 21-11, appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills, Diane Hoss-Fritsch. Could I get you to read that thing entirely, please, Betsy?
Resolution 20-11, appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills, Diane Hoss-Fritsch. Whereas Diane Hoss-Fritsch served as council member of the city of Lake Mills for 15 years over three separate time periods. And whereas Diane Hoss-Fritsch brought valuable, driven perspectives and ideals to the city council, housing authority, and economic development committee. And whereas, as council president, Diane Hoss-Fritsch was able to act influence and achieve goals she felt were important to the city of Lake Mills and its constituents. And whereas Diane Hoss-Fritsch provided valuable contributions from faithful service that has contributed to the development of the city of Lake Mills and the community. Now therefore may it resolve that the city council of the city of Lake Mills, the city by express appreciation and acknowledgement. And we have the citizens of Lake Mills to commend Diane Hoss-Fritsch for her devoted and passionate public service given to the city of Lake Mills. Resolve this 23rd day of February 2021. Thank you.
Do I have a motion of adoption? Is it second? So, all right, just serious apologies for losing your spouse, but I know there's never a good time, but she quit, the majority of her family actually live here in this community to make it a better place for others. And if folks haven't seen the article that was in the paper about her accomplishments, please try to look that up and just dig through there. This lady was very, very dedicated to us as a community, and everything she did was for us. I never heard her say anything about, this is what I want. It's always, this is what my constituents are telling me that they want. And her selfless attitude and multiple times that she served on council, economic development, and every other committee you can even think of is a testament to her desire to make this community a better place for all of us to grow up, to raise our kids, to grow old in, and to actually live and have friends that we cherish inside this community. So much thank you, Doug, for standing beside her for all those years while she was trying to do her best and make the difference for our community. I feel I truly appreciate it, and I hope I speak for the rest of the council members that it's going to be a big shoes to fill with the knowledge we're losing with her. But we appreciate that you're still with us, at least right now, and if anything is needed by you in the future, don't hesitate to ask. Can I, Ms. Shipp, then?
I want to thank the council. I want to thank the staff, who has, over the years, pulled up and encouraged my life. And Diana, because she thought that she could take, that people could talk to the fire department, wasn't talking too much to the city, vice versa. She took it upon herself, once she got her mark, that we go to the fire department meetings, which apparently caused the stir because of the dirt. And she always felt that the council and the city, I mean, the whole, she can't fight the city hall well, she tried to take and bridge that a little bit and try and make it so that people felt when they came to speak that they were respected and that they were part of the community, I would say. And I think that was always her goal when she was on the council, was respect of citizens and the staff and vice versa and so on. And she was doing the job, which was on the city council, what she liked the best. It involved some sacrifices on our part, but she was people that was determined to take and go that women can do the job as well as men, and that they don't have to be goddess in order to achieve that. I'd say it was something historical, females are pretty active or something. Or there are individuals who are raised in the family. She took their gifts on their first trip, signing people up by carrying them around, but there was great. Very tactful, everyone saw that she was a family member. And so, she lost her first margin, I won, gained back one more, her board, family since then. It makes me proud of the way this involved the three, and I couldn't see her husband. Her power. And we, we celebrated 42 years, but what a blessing. So, we had a long history. And again, I thank the city of Lake Mills, I thank the staff, I thank the city councils for all their ingredients. And I thank the fire department, the EMS, and the.
Police Department. I wasn't home at the time. When I got there, it looked, as I said later, it looked like the city was giving her her final parade with all the lights outside our home. And I thank the EMS and the fire department, the police department for their hard work at trying to take and revive my wife, who died of a heart attack, and all their efforts that they did that night. And I just encourage them, continue the great work for everybody else in the community. Thank you very much.
Doug? Anything you'd like to add?
Well, I've worked with, as a city attorney, as well as a council member with Diane for decades, and she was always very concerned and helpful to the community and to the staff. And I'll miss her.
Anything, Michelle? No. Okay. Once again, Doug, we're very sorry. We appreciate your service along with hers. And I guess with that, we can go on to a roll call vote for this, for this resolution.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Captain Stein.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. No sign of our representatives, so we will move on. Item C is the presentation discussion with the applicants for appointments to the vacant District One term ending April 2023, city council position. So what we're going to do, for those that are here in the, in the room, we'll ask you to come up somewhere, you don't have to stand at the podium. So we're going to give you about five minutes to give us your information of why you would help the council by being part of it, and just a little bit about you, about your family, whatever you want to tell us. It'll take about five minutes for each person. We have, fortunately, quite a big group here, which is something we have not seen in the past, and I really applaud the folks that have signed up so far. And just, just remember, if you aren't selected, it has nothing, there's no slight on you. As Doug said, Diane lost her first election, I lost my first election, and I was not appointed two times when I attempted for it. So it's just a matter of just keep trying. If you really want to do it, you'll, you'll make it sooner or later. Okay, so, with that being said, we're going to go down the list by name, I hope by name. We'll see who's here in the audience first. Is Mr. Cordis here?
Is he online, perhaps?
I don't see him.
He doesn't appear to be online.
Yeah, I don't see him either, okay.
Give it, give it a couple calls, just in case.
Yeah. All right, one more call for Mr. Cordis.
Put that plugged into the.
Okay. Nothing heard from Mr. Cordis, we'll move on. Mr. Jeff Johnson.
Right here.
Please step up, sir, and you've got five minutes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you for having me, thank you to those over here. My name is Jeff Johnson, I live on 224 Louis Street. I moved to Lake Mills in 2001. I was still on active duty in the Marine Corps at the time, I had two young boys, I was raising on my own, and I was looking for a nice place to live. I drove by this town many times on Interstate 94 and never ventured into the town until I was looking for a house. And it immediately reminded me of Wisconsin Dells, where I grew up, a lot of similarities, small-town feel, just a very tight community, a lot of people, everyone knew each other. And I decided to buy a house here and raise my kids. I was grateful that I did. My kids both graduated from Lake Mills High School, Luke in 2004, Jake in 2007. The community was very good to them, they moved around a lot, they were pretty nervous about starting school in this community, and the community embraced them. So for that, I'm very thankful. I retired from the Marine Corps, worked for the Wisconsin Department of Veterans Affairs, a program called Mission Welcome Home, it was to kind of bring in the Afghanistan and Iraq veterans. So this was 2005 to about 2007. Nothing was set up in the VA at the time for these veterans, so we had a very small program that did quite a bit. After that, I moved to Virginia for a few years, I helped the Marine Corps set up something called the Wounded Warrior Regiment, which took care of, again, wounded Afghanistan and Iraq, that's where I met my wife, Sarah, who's native of New Jersey, and I said, hey, you need to see this place, Lake Mills, let me take you here, show you around, and she fell in love with it immediately, for a lot of the same reasons I did. We moved back in 2010, with her son Luke and her son Matt, who both attended school here, and since then, I've worked for the Department of Veterans Affairs. Again, I work with Iraq and Afghanistan, that's the wounded and severely injured, gratifying there. Why would I like to be considered for this, this position? Lake Mills is growing a lot, it's grown a lot since I moved here. We have a very small community, a lot of people want to live here, it's a beautiful town, hopefully, but I think that as we grow, we need to grow smart, we need to put our minds together, there are a lot of interesting parties. We live in this unprecedented time where there's these factions on the left and on the right, and nobody wants to talk to each other, but when you get those people in the same room, they talk. And I want to help facilitate conversations on both sides to find out from people what they think about it, what they think about the changes that we're proposing, what they think about the empire, what they think about the short term and the long term. And that's where I'm really good, I'm really a very good communicator, very good at soliciting ideas for people from both sides of the aisle, and I think that's what we have to do. This town is coming up on its 200th anniversary in 15 years, and I think as we do that and as we continue to grow, we can grow smart and we can, we can welcome more people into the community who otherwise maybe wouldn't have a chance to live here, maybe wouldn't have a chance to, to receive some of those blessings that I received. And Doug, if I am selected, I know I have big shoes to fill, it'd be my honor to fill. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
You have any questions for me or later?
No, no questions right now.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So before we move on, can we, is there any problem moving back before?
No, none.
None? Okay, that's what we're going to do. Since I see our assemblywoman is here, thank you, Mr. Dietrich. We're going to move back to that portion of the agenda, which is the presentation in memoriam for the council vice president Diane Hoss-Fritsch. If you'd like to come up to the front here with the stuff, Doug?
Can you turn your, I'm making an echo.
It's an echo?
Yeah, so you want to turn, hit the. It just might be a distraction to some of the people who are trying to talk, you know, because we can hear it.
Yep. So, thank you so much for showing up and bringing this stuff with you today. I reached out to your office just less than a month ago and mentioned what had happened, and we had lost our city council vice president, who is actually Doug's spouse, and Doug is also a member of our council. So I appreciate, I believe you've brought a plaque and the resolution.
Absolutely, and I want to apologize to everyone for being late, that's affectionately known in the Capitol as legislative time. So, hopefully you don't run over like that.
Show's your turn, it's your show.
And first of all, let me say, I, I always feel sad at times like this because, you know, I didn't know Diane, and after seeing everything she was up to, she's somebody I would have liked to have known. I think we all know, in this room, how hard it is to get people to engage nowadays, especially our youngerest. So Doug, you know, you're her surviving spouse, and I can't thank her personally, but I thank you for her service and for the sacrifice the two of you have made to your city, and, and to all of you who serve publicly, because it's a sacrifice. And we all know that people have strong opinions about things right now, don't they? So those who serve in public office really bear the brunt of that. So, we legislators tend to talk too much, and that personally drives me crazy. So I'm going to keep this short, and I'm not going to read all her accomplishments because they are more than any of us could hope to accomplish. Lake Mills bears Diane's fingerprints on so much. And so on behalf of the Wisconsin State Legislature, I want to thank you for her service and present you with this citation, as well as a state and US flag flown over the state Capitol today.
I want to thank you a lot for your efforts. I know being a woman, legislator is not easy, neither was it for Diane, and I thank you for your kind remembrance.
Thank you, Representative Dietrich. Okay. As soon as Doug is ready, we will move on with our program.
Miranda's online.
Got it, Steve, thank you. Yep, our next person to speak will be Miranda Heimstreet. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Miranda Heimstreet. First of all, I would like to say I'm so sorry for the great days, and I would like to thank you for providing this opportunity today. So a little about myself, I grew up in Lake Mills, my family's in Cleveland, for a medical generation, and I graduated from Lake Mills High School in 2015. After I went to college and through university students in Le Creve, there I was a political science major in administration, and after I funded university students at the last year, I did a lot of community work, I was there and I really improved that, and after a long time, I worked for a couple of small law firms in the area, I worked for Captain Legal and Reckless, and Gashville Law, here in Lake Mills. I lived there until I was hired in 2018 at the University of Wisconsin, where I worked in the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs, and I am on the contracts team where we negotiate all the contracts that involve research and campus. And I applied for this position because I grew up in Lake Mills, I love the city, I think it's a really great place to live, and I really miss being involved with caring my community and giving back. And I think that Lake Mills is such a thriving and vibrant small town, and I would really love the opportunity to keep it that way and help take the future. And that's, those are my main motivations for applying to the city council seat.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that, and we, we will move on to our next speaker, thank you. Terry Goodrich, there you are. The floor is yours.
Thank you, council. Doug, sorry to come out, Mrs. Fritsch.
My name is Terry Goodrich, and I graduated Lake Mills High School in 1990, my oldest daughter graduated Lake Mills High School in 2011, and in 2011, I moved to Douglas County, Wisconsin, where I got my first state job with the Department of Transportation. I moved back to Wisconsin with my Department of Revenue job shortly thereafter. I am a very civic-minded human being, I work really hard to do what's best for my community, I work really hard to be community-driven, I believe in my community. Of most of my life, I have lived, probably 90% of that life, in Lake Mills. I have lived in one other state and has a very young child, and I have lived in a couple of the surrounding communities, including when I was up north for four years. My kids have gone through the Lake Mills school system, most of them, or all three of them. My youngest son will graduate from Lake Mills High School this year. My youngest son has been in the Lake Mills school system since, well, birth of three and then early childhood, he is a special needs child, and Lake Mills School District has done tremendous things for him, and the Lake Mills community has done even more for my son and for me as a single parent. I believe firmly in my community, so firmly that I bought a house, a single woman who bought her own house. Back in my day, that was almost unheard of, but there's this glass ceiling that I have hit up against many, many times in my life, and I always have felt that I am the perfect liaison to shatter those ceilings, and I have worked really hard at doing that. I served on a fire department, a volunteer fire department, for four years I lived up north. I have served on many boards, I have been on a board for mission trips on one of the churches that I belong to, I have been on the board of rectors for the Lake Mills EMS for multiple years. I have served as a volunteer for the Lake Mills Emergency Services, doing about 70 hours a week as a free volunteer, including working my normal job. I do these, and I do these things with pride and honor, because I am very, I am of the belief that we are to help our community grow. I have watched this community grow from barely 3,000 people when I was a little kid to, wow, we're pushing that, what, 9,000 mark? We've got huge growth, we've got huge commitments coming in from all over, and I wish to make, to be a part of that. I think that I am a valuable asset because I'm. I think that I am a valuable asset, because I'm a woman. I have a bachelor's degree, associate's degree, and other certifications. And I wish to use those for the betterment of my community, for my children, for my grandchildren, and for me. I will never be able to fill Mrs. Rich's shoes, but I would certainly like to give it a go. And I think that with my communications background education, with my associate's degree, I can do that, and I can do that well. And I can put what's best for this community above all things. The question that turned in my head when I got the email was about what would be my conflict with this community, and where would my conflicts be? And I thought about that long and hard. And my thought was, you can't live in a community and not have conflict somewhere. But my conflicts are pretty readily resolved, because I believe in talking to people. And I don't mean talking at people or above people, I mean talking to people. And that's where I am very effective with. I'm an effective liaison between disputes. I know how to help people settle them. I know how to listen better than speak sometimes. And so I feel that my expertise would lie in effective communication and furthering this community's growth and prosperity, and that's what I would like to do. I would like to thank you all for your time and your considerations, and...
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Richard Mason. Floor is here, sir.
Take this off. I simply saw you, Mr. Rich.
Yep. Hold on a second. Yeah, Steve.
The agenda says Lisa Curler's next.
Oh, yep, you're right, I did.
Yeah, she's online.
Okay.
So you want to let Dr. Mason go and then have her go, or do you want...
Yep, yep, we'll do that, he's up here already. So is that okay? Is that okay, Lisa? I'm sorry about that. Okay, good. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
It's okay.
Yes, yep, it's your, your time.
All right, I'm Rick Mason, 714 Hump Street in Lake Mills. Born and raised in Lake Mills. I've been a teacher, a reading specialist, principal, and a university professor. I spent some time in Janesville, and I was trustee of the library board and president for a number of years. And then I was also on the planning commission in Janesville. And moving back to Lake Mills a number of years ago, I was on the Police and Fire Commission here. And most notably, I guess I've been on the school board for the past 12 years, 10 years as president. And we welcomed Diane a number of times to our meetings, and she came and gave her input. And I'm also representative on the Kid Committee. So that's kind of my background. I'm interested in serving the community in a different manner. And what I bring to it is a sense of communication. I'm a good communicator. Sense of transparency, I think is important for the board, especially utilizing social media today and so on. The infrastructure, I think that's a concern, especially with the growth of the community that it's going through now. Long-range planning is important. And I'm not sure that that is done as well as it could be. And fiscal responsibility is always, always utmost. I serve the people of Lake Mills, and I'd like to continue serving them. I have no axe to grind or anything like that. And I will offer kind of a calm and steady presence on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Sorry about that, Lisa. The floor is now yours, as soon as you unmute your mic, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity and for considering my application for this occasion. I want to connect the knowledge to Doug Rich and his family. I'm really excited about this opportunity to serve the city, especially because it's a tiny, small town where I spent this on the council. So I just wanted to take this time to tell you a little bit about myself, and I'm interested, what I think I can bring to the position, and then I'll answer your questions. My husband Jim and I moved here from Lawwell Park about 14 years ago. Like a lot of people, we discovered Lake Mills as we looked for a place to live that was between our two jobs, in Milwaukee and Madison. And we found a beautiful home on West Prospect where we've lived ever since. Jim and I quickly grew to love this community with this historic downtown, bathroom, school parks, the strong government, wonderful people. And we're so fortunate to enjoy our restaurants, shops, libraries, parks, the beaches. We plan to stay in Lake Mills for many years to come. So I'm here last August, definitely for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for just over 30 years. And now I want to spend my time with the back to the community. I've been paying particular attention to some of the city issues over the past year, and that sort of piqued my interest. Last summer, I heard news about soil development at Plowton Park with the Parks Board and the City Council. Last fall, I joined the Rock Lake and Lake City Center ad hub community. After hearing about the council vacant communities, I watched, I attended several council meetings. I wrote some reports and plans on the website and talked to some of you. And I have to say, the more I learn about what we're facing in the city, the more enthusiastic I am about offering my time, skills, and experience to help. So I think the main thing that I would bring to this position is that I think I could benefit quickly because of my government experience. So some of that experience includes that I understand public records and open meetings requirements. I have a lot of experience reading, interpreting, and explaining ordinances and laws. I've prepared a many budgets, developed policies and rules. And as a state manager, I work with colleagues to prepare strategic plans and goals, implement projects, and evaluate the progress on meeting those goals. I've also hired employees, managed teams, evaluated its performance. I think the type of work I most enjoyed, what I most enjoyed in my career and look forward to in this position, is really just working with other people and helping them. I've always appreciated working with different technical experts, businesses, nonprofits, citizens. People listen to different ideas and perspectives, because I find that that's the most helpful in trying to solve tough problems and make effective decisions. With respect to your question about conflict of interest, I think this is a really important question, and I've given it a lot of thought. From like a legal perspective, I don't own or engage in any business or property in the area other than my home, so I wouldn't expect a conflict of interest in that way. I do have a number of interests that, you know, I feel passionate about in our community. I think it's important to have a sound city budget, to keep our public utilities and police and fire departments running smoothly, to protect Rock Lake and our project for everyone, to preserve the historic character of our downtown, support our businesses, and to grow and expand the way into the future. I know some of the issues that are facing this city include finding a solution for yard waste and composting, managing the tax increment districts, preparing for staff retirements and transitions, providing safe drinking water to all of our citizens, and updating districts in response to the census. If I am appointed to this position, I'm going to be contributing my background and perspective to all these issues, but I will also have a lot to learn. So my approach to the council duties would be to do my homework. I would study the relevant ordinance requirements, the city plans, gather information, and mostly just listen, let's get as many experts and citizens with an open mind, and then make the best decision I can for the entire community. So I believe if I'm following this approach, I wouldn't expect to have a conflict of interest if I'm appointed to the council. So if you're going to ask me, I'd like to thank you for considering me. It would be my great honor to serve as a city council member, and you can certainly count on me to work hard to keep the important work of this city moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to Mr., whoops, Neil Waddell? Did I say that right? Neil Waddell, Waddell? I don't see him online or in the chambers, do you, Steve?
No, I don't.
All right, we'll call it a couple more times before we move on. It's time for Mr. Neil Waddell. Is he present? And a last and third time, Mr. Neil Waddell. Hearing nothing, we will move on to the next candidate, Anthony Munson. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. In solidations for your loss, Mr. Rich. It's a great loss to the community and very hard to fill. I'm Anthony Munson. First, I'd like to cover the question about conflicts of interest. I don't see any at this time in the future. I don't see any either. It is fair to let the council know that my mother is the chair of the Plan Commission and on the Ethics Board. Second, I'd like to cover the reason I intend to serve the people of Lake Mills. The Romans had an expression, "Qui boum, to whom is it of benefit?" And I think it's only fair that the people of Lake Mills are to whom it is to benefit. The answer has to be the people of Lake Mills. Whether it is in my experience as a Boy Scout in the past or my current career, serving others is something I do on a daily basis. I've chosen to serve the community, the state council. I will do my best for the people of Lake Mills, both as individuals and the community they form. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to Mr. Steve Fields, and I believe he's online. Is that correct? Steve, are you online?
He's online.
Yeah, I see him there. Still muted, Steve, if you're on. Is he able to hear me?
Steve, can you get your mic to work?
Does he go on the air?
Yeah.
You still working on a mic, or Steve? Did you text me? Did you send me a chat? Looks like he's having technical problems.
Okay. We'll wait, we'll wait one minute. And if he's not able to fix it, we'll, we'll move on. The rest of the folks that are online out there, is there a lot of feedback? Do you hear a lot of feedback online?
Yes.
It's pretty bad?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the speakers on the tablet there in front of you are feeding back into something. So the eight-by-eight people are definitely getting feedback.
Okay. Sorry for that.
It's probably worse, but Lisa had it pretty bad.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to make this better and trying to get it working seamlessly, but obviously with any voice or video, there's always challenges.
We spent four hours this afternoon working on it. We had contacted a company, but they couldn't come in until tomorrow. They probably will be able to fix it for us, but at this point, it's like, we tried about 17 different things. I think Dave has shut off every device in the building.
Yeah. Okay, the minute is up, and...
Yeah, call him a couple of times, just for procedure purposes.
Yep, yep. Second call, Mr. Steve Fields. All right, third time, Mr. Steve Fields. All right, I got a text from him. See what he says. His mic's not working, okay. So we will, we will move on. That doesn't mean that he's not in contention, it's just that we couldn't get his mic working. Okay.
Steve, or Doug, or Mike, I will try and call him and see if I can put him on speaker.
Okay.
Well, he has my cell phone number. He could just call me, and I can put that on the dais.
Yeah, if you could call one of us, we can put you on speaker and get you done.
Or there's the number for calling into eight-by-eight.
Yeah, let's see whether we can get a full gun discussion. Yeah, so everybody has a chance. Got it. We know he's there. What time does the planning commission start?
Seven.
About seven, yeah, we've got a little bit of time still, so... Hey, Steve, this is Mike. I'm gonna try to make it louder, I don't know if I can or not. Okay, try, there, there we go. All right.
You're all set?
You're all set. You've got your, your five minutes. Can everybody sort of hear him? No, this mic's not on. You'll have to go up here. Go ahead, Steve.
Hey, I'd like to just say thank you for accepting my application and taking time to review all of our resumes. I'd like to express my sympathy for Diane. She was a good advocate, working with us for the last several years. I just wanted to throw my name back in the hat with moving to the north side of town now that I'm in this district. And after serving on the council for the last three years, a little better than three years, I really enjoyed it. And I know a lot of the issues that town is facing and the direction and the vision that we were headed in, so I'd like to get back on it, if possible, and help out the community as much as I can. I guess with that, just thank you for taking the time to consider us, you know, keep it short and brief, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang up on this, if you can hear on the eight-by-eight. You're able to hear on that, right?
Yeah, perfect, I'm able to put them, but for some reason, I just can't use the mic on my phone to communicate.
Okay, I'm gonna hang you up here.
Thank you.
Okay. So that moves us on to item D, appointment of the District One council representative, term ending April 2023. So what that means is, if you're appointed this evening, you will stay as an appointed member of the council until the term ends in 2023. So we, we keep our current election cycle the way it is, so we don't lose everybody all at once, and we can have that changeover of knowledge between council members as we come and go on the council. And that'll be the same for the next two that are up. Next meeting, we have District Two, I believe. And then the meeting after that, just another District One appointee after that. And at that point, we'll have four, four appointees and one elected. Nothing makes a difference, but it's just, I want to make sure everybody knew that, that... Nothing makes a difference, but it's just, I want to make sure everybody knew that, that this is how our council will be sitting for a little bit. Okay? So the way this works is I will open up nominations, and as we get a nomination, we will ask for a second. If a second is granted, that person will be in line for a roll call vote to be an appointed member of the council. If you get a nomination but not a second, that means your name has been removed from consideration for this position at this time. Now, one thing to remember, you're all going for District One. Like I said, we have another opening this third week.
It's the 16th, so the vacancy, excuse me, occurs on March 1st, and there will be an appointment hearing for the second District One seat on March 16th.
Okay.
All of the names that are in contention for this appointment will move forward unless individual applicants choose for them not to move forward.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, to make sure that if, you don't have to submit again, and you'll just automatically be considered for it. So keep that in mind if you don't make it this time, and we'll go from there.
I think actually that Misty will contact them.
Okay.
And she will ask if they want to be considered again, and if they do, then she'll put them back on, otherwise she'll remove them.
Got it. Okay, with that being said, I am opening up nominations for the appointment of District One Council Representative, term ending April 2023. Do I have any current nominations? I would like to nominate Jeff Johnson. Do we have a second for a nomination for Jeff Johnson?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If, if there's more than one second, in that if Jeff gets on the list and let's say another nomination comes up, do we have a second round of voting?
We won't vote, we won't vote until after all the nominations are done.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we were taking them as they came. That was what was explained to me.
Is it?
Yes, so motion, second, vote. If it's a tie vote, we move forward. If there's not a second, it's dead.
That's what we did last time.
All right, my mistake. Thank you, sir. Okay. So we have a nomination right now for Jeff Johnson. Is there a second? Once again, we have a nomination for Jeff Johnson. Is there a second? And a third time, nomination for Jeff Johnson. Is there a second? Hearing none, the nomination has failed. I'm sorry, sir. But that opens up nominations again.
I nominate Lisa Curler.
Motion quick. I didn't even get to say it. So we have, we have, we have a nomination, and we have a second for Lisa Curler. Could you please call the roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
I would say, well, I would say no.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed three-one.
Motion passed three-one. Lisa Curler, did I say your name right? Lisa Curler, welcome to the, to the council. Your first meeting will be actually next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Lisa, this is Dan Drescher. I will be in touch with you tomorrow. Is there a time you're available?
Okay.
What time is good? What time is good for you?
I'm running here. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Dan.
What time is good for you? When should I reach out to you?
How about late morning tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you to all the other candidates as well. I really appreciate it. It's quite an honor.
Yep, so thank you very much for applying. The rest of you, thank you so much for applying. And just keep in mind, your nominations are moved over to the, the 16th for consideration for that open position on District One.
Mike, can I add a comment?
You sure can.
I'd just like to say to all the candidates, I thought, the candidates, I thought, all of you were very, very excellent candidates, and I had a hard time trying to decide who I would pick or not pick. But I encourage you to apply for my position coming up next, next month. We always haven't had this quality of candidates, and a lot of times, we haven't had much interest at all, but I, I thank you for showing your interest in coming here and expressing your desires to be on the council. Thank you.
All right, anybody else would like to say anything?
I too am very grateful that people have shown so much interest in being on the council, and I wish you all luck on the potential appointment to fill Doug's seat. I'm also resigning effective March 1st, so I think there's a whole different slate of candidates that are signing up to be appointed in my place. I'm moving out of the community, so I can't stay on the council.
Yep, and that will be our meeting next, next meeting will be your replacement.
If I may for just one second. Thank you, Vicki. Thank you, Doug, very much. Both of you, I've appreciated working with both of you very, very much. You will be missed. The shock that we're all going through right now and the turmoil, the change that's occurring with the council is, is really historical and a historical year. And both of you, your experience and your, you know, general demeanor and attitude has just been very, very, very appreciated by me personally, and I know by staff as well. So thank you both.
And I also want to add, I've enjoyed reconnecting in a lot of cases with staff and other folks. I've, I've generally enjoyed my time on the council. Sometimes you have to make some tough decisions. It was tough right now, this one.
Yeah, it, it really was. Just because there's so many great candidates, if I can spell right.
I'd also like to add that all of you are extremely qualified to be sitting up here with us. And as Mike had said earlier, do not let this deter you from trying and trying and trying again. Being on council is an act of courage and of perseverance. So please be in mind that we would love to see your faces again, see your names on the docket of people who would like to be part of this. Heck, you can run against me in 2022 if you so feel like it, but not for this district, because that's not my district. But still, I'm thankful for the opportunity to be able to meet all of you in some capacity, and I hope that I get to sort of see your faces in the grocery store or in passing on, on Farmer's Market Days, so that maybe we can recognize each other through our masked faces.
And then maybe just one more thing.
Certainly.
Mike, I think you want to make a plug with regard to vacancies on other boards and commissions.
That's exactly what I would, you're reading my mind. Yeah, so we do have vacancies, and vacancies come up all the time for boards and commissions, and that's truly how our community runs. That's where we get a lot of our information from when we make these decisions. It's from citizens that are part of those commissions and boards, going out and doing that groundwork for us, where we, most of the time, wouldn't have the time to go through all of that stuff. So we rely on them heavily, and please, go out there and look on the city website for these boards and commissions, and I know some of you have already served on them in the past, but get out there and try them out, get your feet wet, understand what it takes for some of these things to occur inside of our community. Sometimes when we make decisions up here, it's not as cut and dry as we would really like it to be, as if I was sitting in your shoes. You really have to take into consideration the, the laws and the other things behind the scene that you may not be privy to unless you've served on some of these boards and committees, and then worked with, with our, with our city attorney to make sure that we're doing things according to the law. So with that being said...
Mike, one last words.
Go ahead.
I wanna, I would like to thank, you make a personal thank you for the kind words that you have said and expressed and written about Diane and your leadership as president of the council. And I would like to staff, thank the staff for their kind help and assistance with Diane's death. And again, my thank you to the EMS, the Police Department, and the Fire Department for their kind help and what they did in Diane's death, too, and I really, really appreciate it. And, well, in the days that I got left, I'll never forget it, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. It was, it was my pleasure to reach out and make some things happen. I would do it for anybody, and Diane was a special person. She helped keep me reindeer on a lot of things, and she kept me pointing forward instead of worrying about things that had happened in the past and keep, and to keep our community on an even keel, to make sure that we can provide all the support we need. So I truly appreciated her guidance and wisdom, and yours as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So that puts us to Item Six, which is adjournment. We are adjourned, and if anybody does want to stick around, we have two public hearings in the Plan Commission starting at seven o'clock that might be interesting to some of the folks, especially repairians and the folks that deal with Lake Shore, that stuff. You're welcome to either come back or jump online and listen to some repairian issues about site corridors and fixing or repairing ground around the lake and different regulations about it. So feel free. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.